Agenda of the public notice special call, city council meeting Tuesday, August 20, 2024, Jasper City Hall, 465 South Main Street. It is 6:00 P.M. This agenda was posted as required under the government code, section 551 dash 041. For more information or copy of the open meetings act, please contact the Attorney General's Office at 1-800-252-8011, or our City Secretary's Office at 409-344-6511. More facts, 409-383-6125. City Council, the City of Jasper City Council, this wheelchair accessible and accessible parking spaces are made. Request for accommodations or interpretive services must be made 48 hours prior to this meeting. Please contact the City Secretary's Office for further information. Post on this 16th May, August 2024, at 2:15 P.M., Mr. L.C. Secretary. This meeting has been called to order. Mr. Lee, please let's see honor of going to prayer, please.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for another beautiful day that you blessed us. Lord, we ask you to be in this meeting with us, that it may be done in unity and peace. Lord, we understand yesterday is gone. Lord, direct this council and the mayor according to thy will for a bright future for our fair city and every citizen. Lord, we ask that you silence those that would cause division and trouble, and Lord, let us look positively into the future according to thy will. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings upon us. Lord, just be with us each and every day as we carry out our duties. Lord, we're so thankful for the many blessings, and Lord, we ask to all this in our precious Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pete. Next item on this public comments, we have Mr. Bob Mayhar.
Can you hear me now? Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Counsel.
Good evening, Bob. You got three headers, Bob.
I'll talk fast today.
I appreciate it.
I was reminded today that off time we forget to be grateful, and I'd like to share a story in my family. Proud father, sixteen-year-old son, did something that wasn't exactly what I wanted, and as a parent, I called him down pretty brutally towards him. And he says, Dad, when was the last time you thanked me for all the stuff I didn't do? The good stuff? And I said, Son, you're absolutely right. I love you dearly. Thank you for not drinking. Thank you for not doing drugs. Thank you for not getting a neighbor girl pregnant after your cousin. Thank you for not keeping me on my knees praying that you'll be safe from your life. And I always try to remember to thank you, so I'd like to thank some people tonight. I don't know if any of the people work for the sewer departments here, but I had a sewer fountain in my backyard. They came out on a couple of occasions, worked on it, made some recommendations, did some modifications of their land, and I made some of my land, and I no longer have that fountain, so thank you. I have an old water line in front of my home. Cause most of our lines here in the city are old, and about every two years, it starts leaking pretty badly. I call the city, they always come out properly, they always fix it, small foot down, they have a lot of digging, and they put another patch on it. I wish we had the money to replace the lines. They do a wonderful job, so thank you. Josh, PD? Hi, Josh. He better remember this than I do. I was doing forty on Burnham, which is a thirty mile an hour speed zone, and he stopped and he wrote me a ticket. I earned it, I deserved it, and if he wrote me up a ticket for every time he didn't catch me, I'd go broke because thirty's hard to do on Burnham. PD, I'd like to thank you for keeping us off the scene then. I'd prefer you didn't catch me speeding. I won't say I quit. So thank you for that. Forward. You're taking your time, your health, your reputation, and putting it on the land for this community. It isn't always well received, but you're standing up for that, and I thank you. Also, if the city will come and fix the pothole at the end of my driveway, I'd like to thank them for that. Just know that sometime we forget to appreciate people, and I know I appreciate my son because he turned into a great man, and I know we have a great community here, and with this board and with this much interest, it's going to get better, so thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a card I'd like to read. I think it's Mr. Ruggles? Ruggles? I can't say his last name, he showed. This was sent to City Hall. I have a little extra happy in my world because of you, and for that, you deserve a big thank you. Just wanted to let you know how much I appreciated your kindness. Your kindness and concern touched me, and touched me, and Tommy Bonds told me what you had to, what you had said, and through this greeting, everything, I can't read his handwriting, he said, God bless you. This was a card that was sent to us in some work that Mr. Jeremy Chestnut did for one of our citizens, and I'd like to thank him for that. Thank you, Jeremy. We don't get too many of those from Mr. Chestnut, but I thought people needed to see that, and I know people needed to hear that. Contrary to popular belief, the man does do his job, and he does a good job, so it's always good to hear something good said about our employees. Bob, thank you for your comments. Just like everybody know, our next item for discussion and or action. Item number one, discuss and consider approval resolution number 2024 dash 3013, a resolution of the City Council, excuse me, of the City Council for the City of Jasper, Jasper, Texas, requesting membership into the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission Metropolitan Planning Organization. Resolution, I'll read the resolution. Thank you. Resolution 2024 and 2013, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Jasper, Texas, requesting membership into the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission Metropolitan Planning Organization. Whereas the City Council's desires to serve the citizens of Jasper by planning for future growth and seeking funding for future transportation, infrastructure, and whereas the City of Jasper acknowledges that a large percentage of its residents commute into the S C T R P C Metropolitan Planning area, and whereas the S C T R P C Metropolitan Planning Organization offers members jurisdiction such benefits as long-range transportation, transportation planning, transportation modeling, and transportation safety, and whereas the City of Jasper acknowledges an increased opportunity to receive federal and state funding for state, county, and city transportation projects if the city becomes part of the S C T R P C Metropolitan Planning Organization. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Jasper, Texas, that the City Council of the City of Jasper, Texas hereby requests membership in the S C T R P C Metropolitan Planning Organization and to be included in the organization's short-range and long-range planning commission. Your motion, please?
Uh, with the motion, yes.
Motion made by Councilman Sample?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Hilleran. This motion is passed and approved on this date, the twentieth day of August, oh, it's right within August. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed, motion passed, you now. So it was passed and approved on this date, this twentieth day of August, 2024. Next item on the agenda, discuss and consider for approval formally proposing a 2024 property tax rate of zero point two six nine one to fund a portion of the twenty twenty-four, 2025 budget. Do we have a motion on that, or any discussion on that? No motion on that? Okay, because it says discuss and consider for approval, so is there any discussion? No? Okay.
Can I say something?
Sure, Robbie.
Because of a timeline, if you don't propose to raise it, then you need to at least take a vote on leaving it the same, or whatever it is you want to do, because we have a timeline in order to propose.
Yes.
The proposal then is published, we have to publish it so that there's a public hearing, and then what, after the public hearing, so many days, then we actually pass and vote on what you want to have the rate at. It's currently zero point two three one three, so I am just asking you guys, because of the timeline that we're in, that you, if you're not going to approve this rate, that you at least take a vote on leaving it the same, if that's what you want to do.
Let me ask you this, what is the timeline?
We have, you have a little piece of paper there that we added that kind of tells.
It says September, is August 21st, September 23rd?
Yes, sir, all of that on the back where it says, okay, so in other words, today, if you propose the property rate, leaving it the same, you're not voting on it, you're just proposing, okay? So if you propose that, then we have to publish this tomorrow, and in order to publish this or get the notice on our website, we're also going to publish it for a couple of weeks in the newspaper. But in doing that, then we have, it has to come up for a hearing to allow the public to come in and say, hey, we don't want this, or yes, we understand, you know, what it's for, and we're okay with that. So it's for or against. After that hearing, then we have to, on the 23rd, adopt the tax rate, whether it's the same tax rate or a higher tax rate. So I'm just asking, that in order for us, we're up against a timeline there.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, yeah.
First, I want to say something. This is pretty tough to say, but we as the City Council up here did not have any part in this and did not do this. We haven't got to straighten this mess out. That's what we're up here for. About two or three years ago, if I remember right, the city were walking and talking, paying its own way, doing whatever it wanted to do. Maybe a little longer. They started getting sixty-seven million dollars, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, give to them, and somewhere in there, this gone. Am I not right? Am I not right? If we hadn't froze that to the electric bill, over to electricity, that probably be gone.
But it probably been spent on the budget, I don't, balance budget revaluation of the taxes or whatever.
Okay. What I'm saying is, the regime back ahead of me, behind me, and one behind me, when this money started coming in here, now, city can't pay its way. When we went through all this money, cities can't pay its way.
Counsel, can I say something?
Yes.
Thank you. I think what we want to do now, and I appreciate what you're saying, and I hear what you're saying, but we're not living in the past. We need to make sure that we get this budget approved here. I appreciate what you're saying, I understand your concern, which everybody up here does, but I would like to get to the business at hand, which is today, to work on this one, so we can make sure that we have a balanced budget invested today.
Past is what we got.
I mean, not past is what we got, but that's not going to make us move forward.
The past is when we got here, I just want people to know this, and the news media's here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm just saying, thank you, we may consider you if you have more say.
Uh, that's all, that's, I'm afraid there's somebody else who's got something to say.
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I believe, Mr. Sample, I agree with you. We're in a really tough spot as city council, okay? Because what he's saying is true. I believe Greg just mentioned if the money was there, it would be used to balance the budget. So I want everybody to understand that when you have an enormous amount of money that's coming in from Cambridge, and you can use that money for your budget, there's no need to raise property rates then. We no longer have that money, okay? So I think that's the point that Mr. Sample was trying to get across. I don't think he's trying to live in the past, but it is very important that we understand why we are where we are, so that it never happens again, because if you don't learn from the past, you're doomed to repeat it. So it is important to know that, that there was an enormous amount of money that came to the City of Jasper for the mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, due to the Cambridge project, and the people who came before us that were in charge of this, that the money had stopped coming to the City of Jasper, and nothing was done, nothing was done.
Absolutely correct, that money was stopped, because that's the contracts.
Absolutely, what?
But there was a request, and I believe there was a request, and it came from the media about where that money went. All of that is documented as far as how that money was spent.
Yes, sir.
We have all of that.
Yes, sir, so the, yes, sir, and so the, no, I'm sorry, you go ahead.
And what you're saying is, if I'm not mistaken, a lot of it was used during that time. I mean, everybody keeps harking on the amount, and I understand that. Yes, we have received whatever it was, sixty-some-odd thing involved, but that money was spent toward items that were needed for the city, not only, not only on light and power, but a lot of that money since I've been on council, and council that approved a lot of it, a lot of that money was spent to keep from raising rates on a lot of items that the city needs capital spending items. And then as far as I was concerned, when I was on council at that time, a lot of those items were needed, some of them may not have been, and I don't think I voted on every one of them. I could go back, you could go back and look at the records to see if I voted on all those items, but a lot of that money, I mean, I'm not saying that was there waste, as far as I know, the last six years since I've been on council, no, because it was spent on items that was requested that were needed. I can't speak for what happened before 2019. I can't speak, I can only speak for what happened from 2019 up until.
Yes, sir, and you mentioned that there was a request by the media before I ever became a councilperson, and there was a list of all the things that this went towards.
It was about that thing.
But I didn't see on that list, and we're also going to substitute the budget with this Cambridge funds, because I think that's important, that's important to know, because see, when you have that amount of money.
Sorry, explain it to me.
Yeah, yes.
No, it's a substitute.
Yes, they were at, the money wasn't just used to purchase things, it was so the tax rate would be able to stay low, because the money was being injected into the budget. And am I, am I wrong, Robbie?
The money for Cambridge was for special capital projects. So you're, you're right, really, in a way, because now we're having to, like you said, we're having to interject those capital projects into the actual budget where it was not before. It was kept separate.
Yes, and that's, and that's kind of my point, that it's, to me, in my opinion, it's easy to keep the property rate low if you have these Cambridge funds. So the request from the media did list all the things that this money was used on, except for that part right there, that without this money, we would be short, you would need to, you would need to raise the property rates if you did not have that money. That is true.
I'd like to share a whole different point of the situation, and the truth of the matter is, I personally, I'm not going to speak for anyone as at this table, but I'm convinced somewhere in the past, there was a mismanagement of some funds, but from a big business, big finance perspective, a certain portion of those S R N B A or Cambridge funds should have been put, placed in reserves going back to 2012. And I can.
We have reserve?
I mean, the reserve we have now is the twenty-nine million that's left out of the sixty-some-odd million, am I right? And if that's, what I'm saying is, starting in 2012, we should have put some of these funds in reserve. We wouldn't be at this point where we're at now. The thing I have been most curious about, or kind of puzzled about, is when you look at the numbers over the past three, four, five years, honestly, I'm of the opinion that for whatever reason, however they managed to do it, past administration, the city found a way to keep property tax rates as low as possible, utility for electric rates as low as possible, and that's not necessarily good business. You know, you got, you keep, I even have learned that former council members had a goal or a dream of driving the property tax rate to zero. That's, that's not a good business plan. I mean, we would be in a bind if it got much lower than it is right now. So Wall Street, the financial market, the real estate market, everything's got that point where there's a correction. And this is, this is one of those points, and what we're dealing with right here is not on any of us, not on any of y'all, not on anyone in City Hall today.
Yes.
But somewhere in the past, I don't know, I'm not, I don't care to be in the past, I'm not here to judge or point fingers, but I'm convinced of that, because within the last six years, seven years, I don't know how many times I've told someone in the city, you see something new, and they tell me how it was purchased, and said, we shouldn't be using all those funds for that. So we are in a very difficult situation, a very difficult position. I don't know of any other city council who, on day one, when the five of us sat down right here, and as I've described it to people around town, it didn't get dumped in our lap, it was already sitting in this chair.
Yes.
And now we're having to pay the price of the sins of others.
And I do agree with you on that one. I do, I agree with you wholeheartedly on that, because some of these things, like Mr. Sample has said, that was purchased, that was spent, that was whatever, didn't have to be. And I understand the bearing, and I understand that we got to move forward.
That's right.
When we got to move forward, a snap in the face, I mean, that's exactly what began.
And I like the statement that Mr. Prosky made, yeah, because this, this did happen to us in the past. We're not going to live in the past, we want to move forward and learn from the mistakes of the past. We don't want to repeat that.
Can I add anything?
Yeah, you can make the comment, and then go ahead and make, is that what we're going to do on this?
As I've told people the last two or three weeks, we're country people, we're country folk, we just like the bottom line. Don't talk percentages, don't talk values, don't talk kilowatt hours, or whatever you want to talk. So, you know, the first thing I did after our first utility rate meeting, I did the thing that I've always done, I did the math and stuff. So just so everybody will know, and it's public information, you can look, I think my home property is valued at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This proposed tax rate is only, is going to increase my taxes paid by twelve dollars. So that, if anybody needed to have a feel about the truth of the matter, that's you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, now let's move forward with the proposal, what we're going to do.
To, I guess, I'm having a party here, move it to this table right. This is for both of you only.
You would like to make a motion to vomit, propose for a 2024 property rate of zero point two six nine, to vomit a portion of the budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hilleran, the motion was made by Councilman Sample. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion? Motion passed, you now. Thank you, counsel, appreciate all your words. Thank you very much. Item number three, discuss and consider for approval, authorize a date and time for a public hearing for the property tax rate. Yes, Greg?
We are actually on number five, wanting to move the city council meeting from the third to the ninth.
So it's going to be a, we'll have time for you.
Cost of time here to get stuff done, that's when we want to do the public hearing.
We can do that at the same time?
We'll do it at 5:45.
Okay.
Before the six o'clock meeting.
Yeah, that can be done at eight, because as I attended the.
Please, please create me 5:30.
5:30, okay, yeah, because I attended the last Commission's Court meeting, and they actually did have the hearing, but they're letting it go at the same time, on the same day, so we'll be, that is allowed to do that.
We can do both of those, take both of those to the ninth, and the regular meeting be at six, and the hearing be at 5:30.
Can you put that in form of a motion, please? Good stand, counsel?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Councilman Sample to make those changes?
I second.
Seconded by Councilman Parker. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed, you now, so any further discussion on that issue? Okay, thank you. City Council, all city, all members being present, we're going to close executive session. The time is quick. Oh, discuss, I'm sorry, I apologize. Discuss and consider the approval changes to the working budget event?
I'd like to say something. I just want to make sure that the budget that you're making right now is what we discussed before. I want to make sure that the employees receive the cost of living three percent raise. I want to make sure that that's included in there.
So if you want to put that in the form of a motion for that, and also what you want us to do on the revenue side, on the electrical rates, on the three-year incremental or five-year incremental, so they'll know how to budget for revenue, because I'm going to put all that together tomorrow and get that published, the proposed budget paid.
Because since that is a part of the budget, she, she is correct in making those changes.
I make a motion to include the three percent cost of living raise for the 2024, 2025 budget.
Is there anything else you have to add?
I know that we discussed, I'm sorry, can I, can I just say what we have discussed? What we have discussed is that we would be able to, to be able to keep the raises and to be able to make the budget, we did discuss funding the electrical department with a million dollars of the Cambridge funds, is that what you're, is that what I need to make a motion about?
That, and also your, we wanted to know what y'all wanted to do also about the electrical rates, because, you know, there's a meeting scheduled on the 28th, a public hearing, if you want to change it, because that's part of the revenue also, that has to be included in, you know, the budget, the proposed budget, but if you want to leave it the same, we just need to know which direction you want us to go with that, yes?
And you need this all in one motion, or these can be separate motions, so we know how everybody?
However, however y'all choose to do it.
Yeah, I would rather do this in separate motions, do you guys agree with that?
I agree with you.
So I, so my motion is to include the three percent cost of living raise for the, for the employees in the 2024, 2025 budget.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Prosky, can I second that? Seconded by Councilman Parker. All in favor?
Since there's a second now.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, go ahead. Wasn't there a pay increase proposed in the budget we've been looking at?
Two and a half.
Okay, so it's just a habit of a person, an increase?
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to over-speak. Did you have anything else?
No, there's...
I recommend three percent because three percent is what it should be. Things are going to cost the same when the guys that work for the city go out and buy something at Walmart or pay their own electric bills. And it's not fair. It's not fair. And so I can't vote for something that I feel is not fair. You know, you guys didn't make any of these decisions either. So absolutely, three percent.
Well, just to clarify, I wanted to make sure there was a proposal in the budget already. I didn't want it to be three percent on top of something that...
No, no, no. Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, so you got that one done?
Got that one done.
Okay. So the next, excited that you want to present?
I make a motion to allocate one million dollars from the Cambridge funds to fund the electrical department.
I second that.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Can we discuss?
Yep. I think you get to discuss.
No, we can discuss.
Okay, go ahead.
You make a motion in a second.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
And then discuss, okay. I just want to make a point here to also say that we also discuss using maybe some of the money that the twenty-eight million in the settlement to lower rates at a later time and things like that. We are discussing ways. I just want to make a point to say that, to lower people's electric rates. So we did talk about that. That is still a possibility. That's, I just want to make a point to say that.
Mr. Mayor? So this one million would come out of the reserve each one, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, yeah.
Exactly.
So you made a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Councilman Barber.
I'm saying motion.
Sample, two people voted. Sample, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, you announce. Your next motion. You have another. You have another motion?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not cheat. But I believe the staff wants us to discuss the electrical rate.
Just whether you want to leave it alone. If you want to leave it alone, we'll cancel the meeting for August the twenty-eighth. We just need to let them know.
Yeah, if you want to leave it the same, or if you want to have another meeting to discuss it more, it's up to, it's up to council, whatever you want to do.
Okay. If we leave it alone, we don't have a meeting on the twenty-eighth. Well, we do have a meeting on the twenty-eighth. What is it going to change?
Leave it alone, nothing's going to change, am I correct?
Well, you'll, you know, you saw the numbers, you know, that I gave. I wanted to give out a package, so... You know, that's true that we have a bit of a shortfall there. But it just depends on how you guys want to handle it. It's, I'm sorry, but it's up to you guys as to what we're going to do.
And so, and so down the road, down the road, two, three, four, five years from now, say, a year or two from now, down the road, if we leave this the same, will that do the city adjust?
Well, you get that million dollars, you can supplement this year. Next year, you'll have three-quarters, more than three-quarters left to supplement. And it just continues at that base until you run out of some funds or you decide to raise your rates to cover.
It's the old analogy, you pay me now or you pay me later, unfortunately.
Yeah, I need to put out a ticket, and that plus enough.
I can share a good one with you outside every morning.
So what have we decided to do? What have you, what have you decided to do, the five of you?
What's the current increase?
What is it, Robbie?
Whatever it was, when I did the math, mine would increase by about...
You come up to zero-point-two?
The electric.
The electric rate?
Well, and to remember, you have the option of three-year, five-year.
Three or five-year, right.
You know, so the three-year adjustment looks like it's two-thirty on the customer charge and then point-zero-zero-one-eight-five-six added to the energy charge. This is not including your pass-through fuel charge. And the five-year is one-thirty-eight on the customer charge. And then we're talking residential. And then an additional point-zero-zero-one-one-one on the energy charge.
Give us that five, here we go with the five-year increase.
So the five-year would raise it to nine-fourty-nine would be the customer charge, and the energy charge would be point-zero-two-two-eight-six for the this coming fiscal year. That's what the residential in the five-year would be.
Ms. Mayor, we got to go slightly, but you know what you want to do.
I'm sorry. You speak with honor. Council, but you know what you want to do.
So with the five-year, it would be twenty-twenty-eight before you see yourself in the black. And the three-year, it would take you till twenty-twenty-seven would be the first year. So you're just a matter of years difference between the two as the new to receive light and power funding itself.
Can we get Robbie to get at the microphone? We can't hear nothing back there.
Oh, the air conditioner. I'm sorry. Please get the microphone. Can you hear me now? Okay. So basically, what we're seeing is with the base financial that we have right now is light and power, if we don't do anything with the rates, is going to be a million dollar and some change shortfall. Now, you did indicate using funds for that, right? If we do a three-year rate adjustment, it will take us till twenty-twenty-seven for light and power to fund itself without having to pull from reserves. If you do a five-year rate adjustment, it's going to take until twenty-twenty-eight for light and power to fund itself without having to use reserves.
So let me ask, what you're saying is, if we don't use reserves, if we don't raise the rates, we'll have to use the reserves?
We will continue to have to use reserves until we get out of that.
Okay.
Yes. No, sir, I haven't yet gave that. Do you want to make a motion?
Counsel?
I make a motion that we use the million dollars.
Is that going to be each year? No, just for one time, right?
The next year will be seven-hundred-seventy-six thousand dollars.
Yeah. I mean, we'll still have to, let me ask, what I'm asking is, will we have to pull from the reserves each year?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I want to know. But I want people to hear that, to know that. That those, that funds that are there now, you'll have to pull from those reserves for those, what is it, three years?
Even a three-year or five-year, you got...
Yeah, Greg, please.
Even on the three-year, it would still be six-hundred-eighty-two thousand dollars pulled out. The next year would be ninety-eight thousand before you went into the black. And then on the five-year, you're going to pull eight-sixteen this year, three-sixty-nine the following year, one-seventy-nine the next year, before your nineteen thousand dollars will be good on the final year. So either way, you're going to be using reserves. But, you know, this is not something we want to bring you out either. But as you said earlier, it was left in our hands also.
Well, my concern is like anything else, anyone else, anywhere else. At our homes, our places, the business, in school, here, once you tap into a reserve, you're going to go back to the cookie jar over and over and over again.
Yes, sir.
It's going to start bleeding to death. And we need it, we need those dollars when we have major storms, am I right?
Yes.
So basically, what you're saying right now is, council needs to make the decision whether they want to make these increases or not make the increases, hold for those increments, and pull from the reserves each year.
And you know, and do remember, this is a proposed budget. You will be actually finalizing the budget on the meeting in September. Another option that you might want to think about is, we will, we can do the proposed based on some, you know, whether we leave it the same and using reserve, we can do that for now. We can leave the meeting in place for August the twenty-eighth for the rate attorney and the consultants to come and be available for... Because that's where you allow the public to come and say, hey, you know, this is their idea about those rates. And so you do not have to... Well, you will not be passing what the rates are going to be tonight.
No, it's just proposed, correct?
This is just proposed on the rates, just like the tax, property tax rate. You will not pass it until later.
So what you're saying is, is that the choices are to do nothing and not raise rates at all. To raise the rates incrementally over a three-year time period, that would be two dollars and thirty cents. Or raise rates incrementally over a five-year time period, and that would be a dollar and thirty-eight cents.
Well, that's just the base charge. There's like part of a penny, you know, on the...
On zero-zero-one-one.
Yeah.
On the five-year one.
So the question you have is that you want us to either do nothing, go with three-year or five-year? You need a motion on one of those three things.
But it's not going to be proposed.
Yes, it's just proposed.
Just proposed. Just proposed.
Sure. If Mr. Barber will directly commission, I'd like to amend his motion that we propose the three-year incremental. It's not blocking, it's not sad, it's not...
Just proposing that, proposing that until we have the next week.
Okay, just, I believe.
You're allowed. Okay, Councilman Hill Grant has amended the motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Seconded by Councilman Sample. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, proposed motion passed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The first of the three motions that started with Ms. McCroskey, I don't think we voted on that first.
I did vote on it.
I didn't think...
Did we, Liz?
We got a Moegren and Barber. Barber seconded it, then he went to vote, and they went to discussion.
Okay, yeah, so I said we didn't vote.
So we need to vote.
So we need to vote on Mr. McCroskey's first motion, please. Mr. McCroskey, you repeat your motion.
It was for a three percent raise for all employees.
No, three percent raise for all employees.
Just wanted to make sure I had the right one.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, you announce. We get to go into executive session now?
You have a vote on the second one?
Yeah, yeah, we voted.
Just the first one?
Just the first one.
Just the first one. Okay, now, executive session. City Council, all members being present, will enter to close executive session pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 Personnel Matters. And if deemed appropriate, take action on any of the above matters. The time is now six forty-four P.M. resign into executive session.